Very special occasion to welcome you all to our first five nonprofit candidate forums. In today's forum, we'll have the opportunity to hear from five candidates running for San Jose City Council in districts three, five, and seven. We encourage all participants to have their cameras on and microphones muted during the forum. Our candidate forum provides the opportunities for the nonprofit community to learn more about the ideas, visions, and priorities of candidates for local office. We focus our discussion on issues that impact nonprofits as partners, government contractors, community-based service providers, and advocates. And this year's candidate forum, we will be discussing, we will be focusing on key policy areas for nonprofits, such as housing, budget justice, children's issues, food security, and public safety. While I go through today's guidelines, we'd absolutely love to learn who's in the room with us. So please help us out by introducing yourselves in the chat with your name, pronouns, your title, organization, and the native land that you reside on. While folks go ahead and do that, as a continuing SVCN practice, I want to acknowledge that in San Jose, where I am today, I'm on the unceded lands of the Muakmaa Loa tribe. Together, let us commit to educating ourselves in advocating for indigenous peoples, communities neglected and displaced by the US government and other colonial powers across the world. Since people here are tuning in from different areas, I encourage you to learn about what land you are living on by using the website my colleague will share in the chat and share that information in your introduction. Also, please note that maps can be insufficient and may not fully represent shared spaces, time periods, overlapping territories, and so much more. We encourage you to learn more by engaging with the local indigenous-led and serving nonprofits in your community. For accessibility purposes, we do have the automated closed captioning feature in Zoom activated. Now, with this, you do have the ability to move the captions around on your screen to place more convenient, or you can disable the closed captioning feature entirely if you prefer not to have it up. To do so, please reference the bar at the bottom of your Zoom as pictured on the slide. Click the live transcript on the right-hand side and then click hide subtitles. If you're having any tech or other troubles during the session, please private message me or any of my SVCN colleagues directly in the chat. Okay, so before we get things started, I'd like to introduce our moderator for this forum, Jana Kadoff, reporter from San Jose Spotlight. Jana Kadoff is an award-winning bilingual journalist covering San Jose City Hall for San Jose Spotlight. Jana grew up, studied, and worked in San Jose and has a deep understanding and love for the city. She seeks to translate that into meaningful stories that keep the community informed and hold powerful leaders and institutions to account. She has experience reporting on breaking news, local government, evictions and homelessness, social movements, and everything in between while raking the muck as Bay City News' South Bay reporter. Before that, she reported on the Syrian refugee crisis in Greece, Italy, and Germany while getting her undergraduate degree in degrees in political science and journalism at San Jose State University. Welcome, Jana. We're so excited to have you in this space.
Thank you, Claire. I'm so excited to be here. Before we get started, here are a couple of ground rules. Candidates will have one minute each for opening statements. Please remain on mute while other candidates are speaking. During the program, we'll have seven questions, five that are prepared by SVCN and two audience questions. For those, you'll have one and a half minutes to answer each question. And then we'll move on to our lightning round, which will include yes, no questions or responses fewer than five words. And then to finish up, candidates will have one minute each for their closing statements. And one final note, please be respectful to your fellow candidates. And of the time limits, we will have a timer on the screen so you can see how much time you have to answer each question. And questions will be posted in the chat as well. So let's get started. I'd like to introduce our candidates. Sorry, yes, Maya, you have a question?
The countdown on the screen, is there a screen that we should be pulling that has a countdown or will it start?
It'll, it'll start. It'll, you'll be able to see it.
Thank you.
Yeah. All right, let's go into introductions. So from district three, we have Irene Smith and Omar Torres. From district five, we have Nora Campos, and unfortunately, Peter Ortiz is not able to attend our forum today. And from district seven, we have Maya Espaza and Bianca. Welcome, candidates. You'll have one minute for opening statements and we'll start with Irene. Oh, I think you're muted.
Thank you. Thank you for inviting me. I'm going to use my intro time to respond to some inaccurate interpretations of my recent comments. In the last forum, I challenged Omar Torres's claim that he had more experience than I. And here's why. It's because I have a much broader employment history that includes and goes beyond nonprofit and government categories. I have a deep nonprofit experience, which I absolutely value as the founder and seven-year leader of the Business and Housing Network for San Jose. And as a judge pro temp and administrative hearing officer for Santa Clara County and a teacher at San Jose State, I have government experience. I founded two small businesses in downtown, worked in finance at IBM, and have worked in mental health in a psychiatric hospital. When I said Omar's experience was wanting, I meant that simply he doesn't have the scope of experience I do as he only has worked in nonprofits and governments. This is just factually accurate and uncontroversial, and I stand by it.
Thank you. Omar?
Great, thank you. Good morning, everybody. My name is Omar Torres. My pronouns are him and el. I grew up in the Washington neighborhood in the city of San Jose, and I experienced many of the inequities that we see even today in my neighborhood. But that was the catalyst for my involvement. And I actually want to go back to one of the greatest achievements that I ever had the honor of being was being an executive director for the Santa Maria Urban Ministry, where we fed our community, we tutored our kids, we kept them out of gangs, we made sure that we were revitalizing our neighborhood. But most importantly, we were providing services or connecting services of all types to our unhoused community here in the city of San Jose. So thank you so much.
Thank you. Nora?
Good morning, and it is a great honor to be here speaking to the nonprofits that actually really make sure that our communities are thriving and delivering services. I want us to imagine a community in East San Jose where it was in 2001 to 2010, where our youth centers were open and available so that our children were not out on the street, so that we, our libraries were fully staffed so that our children could walk in any time of the day and be able to read a book. This is the leadership that I will bring back to City Hall, and this is the leadership that I will partner with, with the nonprofits and the neighborhood leaders and the community. Our community needs leadership, and I will bring that. And also hoping that I can work with the nonprofits so that we provide the services that are greatly needed, whether it's childcare, whether it's feeding our seniors, that's what I will bring to East San Jose. Thank you.
Thank you. And let's go to Maya.
Thank you. Growing up in San Jose, I've spent my life serving the community that I love. My parents, both educators, taught me what it means to serve. So whether it's as a school board member at the Franklin McKinley School District or leading the All the Way Home Campaign to End Veteran Homelessness, I've worked to make a difference right here in San Jose. As your council member and district seven resident, I know our challenges. I've been spending my life working to solve them. From adding homework programs at the Franklin McKinley School District to being on the ground helping our neighbors during the Coyote Creek floods in 2017. Undoing decades of disinvestment in this community requires a council member who knows our issues, not one who lived in San Joaquin County for the past 25 years and moved here looking for political opportunity. It's not just about campaigning, it's about delivering. Because of my track record in our community, I'm endorsed by the San Jose Firefighters, Santa Clara County Democratic Party, and Congresswoman Zolaufgren. Thank you.
Thank you. And Bianca? Oh, you're muted.
Well, thank you very much for having us here to discuss issues that matter to most of us. And for me to have these issues or keeping you safe, reducing the homelessness, making sure the government is listening to us and not just the powerful. I've been serving the community here for 22 years, longer than any city council that had been in existence, and I've been in the city of San Jose since 83. And my family have lived here for more than 38 years. So I know a little bit about the community, and I know that the local 230 support only the union member. Not all firefighters have support or are sitting in combat. I'm, I am a firefighter, a fire captain. Our problem here has gotten worse. I respond to emergency and I lead others when I respond. And we are facing multiple emergency from homelessness, crime, to many suffering untreated mental illness. And I will respond. I will lead. I will not be afraid to take on the powerful. And thank you, and I look forward to your answering your question.
Thank you. Thank you all for your opening statements. So we're going to get into the questions and we'll be asking them in rotating order so that each candidate gets the opportunity to answer first. So here's our first question. Several studies have demonstrated that permanent housing programs are the most effective solution to homelessness. In fact, here in Santa Clara County, 96% of homeless individuals connected to permanent supportive housing remain in their homes one year later. Do you believe that our homeless responses should be centered on permanent housing strategies? And let's start with Omar.
Good morning. Yes, absolutely. I support permanent supportive housing. If your basic, if your basic needs are not met, it's going to be more difficult for you to find work or grow, have personal growth. We need to protect our residents from this crisis that we, that, that, that is happening. We see it every single day. We need to make sure that they are fed. We need to make sure that they are clothed. We need to make sure that they are getting the services for mental health, that they are detoxing. We need to create stability for our unhoused residents. And so absolutely, without a doubt, I support housing first. I support permanent supportive housing. It is the only way that we're going to solve this crisis.
Thank you. Nora?
Thank you for this question. This is at the top of every voter's mind on how we're going to house our homeless population in a very respectable way. I was the author of AB 2176 when I was an assembly member, and that was bridge housing. It was the first bridge housing. And I just want to take a moment to explain to you how San Jose tends to always be on the cutting edge of how we're solving problems that need to be solved in California. This was supposed to have been a bill that would have covered the whole state of California, but people weren't ready for it. But here in the city of San Jose with my leadership, we were able to pass it. The governor was able to sign it, and we were able to start building bridge housing from day one. Unfortunately, it took a little longer and then we went into the pandemic. But, but bridge housing provided housing to be built on government property, provided wraparound services for mental health services and services that would help individuals be able to get back on their feet. That's the leadership that I bring to the table, and I hope to be able to expand on that with my colleagues on the San Jose City Council. It is so important that we as a community make this a priority so that everyone is safe and feels that they are living in a very respectable place. Thank you for the opportunity to answer a very important question.
Thank you. Maya?
Thank you. I believe permanent support or permanent housing should be the main goal of our homelessness response because it's a solution that's proven to work. It's backed by research and experience. Without the stability of housing, our unhoused residents may not be in a position to accept services that they need to address whatever root causes, whether it be physical causes or they need a job or whatever. They're not going to be in a position to accept that help. And so these permanent housing strategies must be paired with health services, mental health services, behavioral health programs, drug treatment programs, reentry programs for folks coming out of the correction system and jobs. And lastly, I do believe that homelessness prevention is vital to our homelessness response. We cannot solve homelessness if we have more people falling into homelessness than we are able to help get out of their homelessness. This is why increased rental assistance during the pandemic, why we fought so hard for it, why protections for workers, renter protections, and for fair wages are so important because an ounce of prevention costs us less than a pound of response. Thank you.
Thank you. Bianca? I see that you're muted.
Sorry for a little interruption there. Yes. I believe in permanent housing, but it's matter what kind of permanent housing, right? It is important to acknowledge that permanent housing is not a whole solution. We need to focus on mental illness, job training, job placement, drug and alcohol treatment. We are spending so much money building so few of the units. I think we should prioritize the basic, which is safe individual shelter first. We have to look at solution, like for example, the tiny home, the bridge housing that we're building now is $180,000, where we can copy and paste where other cities are building those at $3,000. And I think people need to be responsible. And I think that if we work together with a new solution, because right now, things are not working. We're spending more money with less result. And with a new thinking, the new solution, we can reduce the amount of homelessness right here in our city, especially in district seven. Thank you.
Thank you. And Irene?
Permanent housing is and should be part of our approach to homelessness, but it should not be the only part. And the city and the housing department's adamant embrace of housing first only to the detriment of more effective, cheaper, and faster solutions has been a big contributor to our inability to put a real dent in the wide variety of homelessness. We need to be more creative and open-minded, and more folks need to be educated in the complexities of housing. That's why my D3 recovery plan focuses on shelter stabilization and services first for the unhoused who are living in parks and on sidewalks. And it focuses on making much more effective use of existing housing stock to help alleviate our issues, and I call it placement first. We are way behind other cities in making it easier for business to convert vacant office space and other shelter space into housing. And we can look at downtown, and there's a lot of see-through buildings. And of course, we need to build more permanent housing, but that has to include bridge housing and all, all wide varieties of stabilized shelter. But we can't keep building it at $1 million a door. That's not a long-term strategy.
Thank you. Our second question was pre-submitted by Mimi Hernandez from the Prosperity Lab. As you might be aware, since June 2020, the local nonprofit community has been deeply engaged in anti-racism work, both within their organizations and in tackling the effects of systemic racism in our community. For example, over 150 nonprofits have signed the racial equity pledge. How do you plan to address historical inequities in your district? And let's start with Nora.
You know, thank you for this question. I actually have been dealing with this my whole life. And when I first was on the city council, we had to deal with this. And the way I will deal with it, the first time that I've been dealing with this is that I'm going to make sure that the resources that we have not been getting in our community come back to our community. When we think about making sure that we're addressing this equity, now there's two things. There's equity, systemic racism, and inequities that come from the government institution. And then there are the ones that filter to our community. We need to make sure that our libraries are open because our children need places to be able to study and read and thrive. We need to make sure that when we create an infrastructure, that we have sidewalks and streetlights. We need to make sure that our parks are safe and clean. We need to make sure that when we talk about economic development in the city of San Jose, like I took on Story and King, that particular area had not had an investment in over 30 years. It was the city of San Jose's right, and it took leadership to make sure that we got $100 million investment. And now it's a thriving economic engine. We provided jobs. We have four financial institutions that finally came into our community so that our families were able to be able to walk to their bank. That's what we need to do, and I will bring that back again.
Thank you. Maya?
Thanks. This is, this is huge. And for too long, city resources had not been distributed equitably, leaving our neighborhoods with the greatest needs without the proper funding to address challenges or invest in neighborhoods that deserve to be invested in. And that wasn't right. And that's why in 2019, five of us on the city council, Sergio Jimenez, Raúl Perales, Magdalena Carrasco, Sylvia Arenas, and myself, proposed setting funds aside to create an office of equity so that we could better address these inequities in our communities. After several months of negotiating and over seven-hour debate at a city council meeting, we lost. We lost five-six. However, in light of the George Floyd protests in the June of 2020, the city ultimately decided to establish an office of racial equity with a unanimous vote. And I'll continue to fight for a city where every person, regardless of their race, gender, or zip code, has the opportunity to thrive. Thank you.
Thank you. Bianca?
Well, thank you for the question. We'll start with the inequity we face right now. Our community has more crime than the wealthier communities. It is dirtier. We have more homeless. We have more than our share of the homeless encampments in district seven. I care about history, but I also care about the here and now. I think people in our district want to be living in a place that is safe, clean, thrivable, and they run their business and raise their family. It is great to look back and understand why we have so many inequity. And especially in district seven, the funding was never there for district seven because we did not have a city council who fought for it. In the end, but just as good to look forward. And we need to end these inequity now. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Irene?
The legacies of internment camps and Jim Crow, redlining, overtly racist codes at the city and state level are impossible to ignore. For D3 at the municipal level, here are four areas I'd like to focus on. Number one, free transit within the city, or at least for D3 residents. This would neutralize some of the geographical privileging that takes place in a car-based suburban environment. Number two, crackdown on illegal rentals. Because of our constrained housing supply, off-the-book housing can exploit the needs of immigrants and disadvantaged groups. This has got to stop. Number three, municipal properties converted into housing. And as I've discussed, we can start placing people placement first with people in unused empty spaces and converting that property into housing. And number four, really importantly, enforce the siting policy fairly. D3 has been the dumping ground for all sorts of housing in San Jose, and San Jose has been the county's dumping ground. This has got to stop. Affordable housing needs to be equitably distributed, and the housing department itself needs to follow its own siting policy rules.
Thank you. And Omar?
Yes, thank you for this question. We know that for many years, this city passed policies with various undertones, mostly racial. And these policies have had a negative impact in our communities of color, especially in the neighborhood that I grew up in and the neighboring community, Spartan Keys and McKinley in district three as well. And one of my top priorities when I'm a council member is make sure that we are making necessary modifications to ensure they're reversing these policies that we've had, that we have a community-based approach for all land use decisions. That's extremely important because everyone in this city deserves fair housing and that we're combating displacement in our city. But also, our budget is $3 billion. And what does this mean? We need to make sure that those billions of dollars are being invested in our small businesses, especially in our immigrant business corridors, that we have paved streets in neighborhoods that have never had paved streets before, and that we are, most importantly, maintaining our parks in under-resourced communities. We were park depleted in Washington. Parks are critical for a community's success. So we need to make sure that we are funding programs and revaluing our community's needs based on zip codes.
Thank you. We'll move on to our third question. The city's Recovery Task Force, established in large part due to advocacy by the nonprofit Racial Equity Action Leadership Coalition, will shortly be issuing recommendations about investments to support members of our community most harmed by the pandemic. One of the task force committees is focusing on early education and childcare. What do you think the city's role should be in addressing the community's needs for affordable early education and childcare, especially given the tremendous workforce challenges we're seeing in that arena? And we'll start off with Maya.
Thank you. Thank you. I'm a firm believer that affordable early education and childcare is vital to the success of our families and to uplift our families. As a Franklin McKinley School Board Member, I brought all-day kindergarten to the school district. And as a council member, along with Council Member Sylvia Arenas, we authored $10.5 million to provide unprecedented funding for childcare services through our Parks Department, our public library, and through funding to support our current childcare providers who were hard-hit during the pandemic. With the cost of living so high in San Jose, people need to be able to work to survive. And they should not have to choose between paying their bills and ensuring that adequate care is provided for their child. And I believe the city can do more and that the city should work with partners from nonprofits to other government agencies to ensure all of our families, not just families that can afford it, have access to quality and affordable childcare. And this is why there's ongoing work with school districts, with nonprofits, with our county, how to collaborate and combine our funding to achieve these goals. Thank you.
Thank you. Bianca?
Well, thank you for the question. I have three children and I understand what it is to make ends meet and childcare. We need to promote the kind of high wages so family can survive in this expensive environment, high-quality jobs that come with benefit, that help take care of our childrens. And we do need job training and keep our community safe, cleaning up our city and make a place where worker wants to stay, so company wants to find workers, and it creates better wages. And I'll tell you this, there's so many families now working two jobs. Their, their parents are working two jobs. They don't have enough time to spend with their childrens. And that's become the core problem of our society, families being broken up. And I believe that we need to have incentive. We work with nonprofit organization. We work with county. We work with city and the state to find a better solution to protect our future, which is our children. Thank you.
Thank you. Irene?
It's not just the workforce challenges that support early education and childcare. And until we start fixing the inequities that force parents in many historically oppressed communities to have two or three poorly paying jobs, we really disadvantage family creation in those groups. And we privilege wealthier workers with one job. Education is everything. So I am very much in favor of more investment in the area of early education. From my perspective, early education should be free. Childcare should be mean-tested in terms of payment. And one of the helpful things that the city could actually do to support both early education and childcare is to clean up our parks for families and children. This will be dependent on making the parks accessible in D three to everyone and implementing the incremental ladder of housing success. So that those who are currently using the parks for shelter have an alternative for their belongings and for the services and shelter stability that they need. Thank you.
Thank you. Omar?
Yes. So I'm a former school board member and I served on the Franklin McKinley School District and continued the work that was set in place by then-school board member Maya Sparza. So we doubled down and invested in early education and that was extremely important. But it was the most important part was the private and public partnerships that we built there on Franklin McKinley. And I've always used that model as a neighborhood organizer and nonprofit executive. And so as a city council member, we need to make sure that we continue to partner with First Five with their Family Strength Inc. initiative. It's a bold and comprehensive plan to make sure that our children have the tools they need to succeed in this family. And so I am very, I'm very excited to continue to the work that our city has been doing by making sure that we are funding folks to get into childcare, to have childcare, that we are training folks to be childcare providers and be quality providers. And that's the important part. So keeping children safe, having solid programs is important to me. And I hope to continue to work with Supervisor Ellenberg. She has done amazing work passing policies and creating strategies for our families here in Santa Clara County to make sure that they succeed. Thank you.
Thank you. And Nora?
Thank you. One of the things that I did when I was on the city council the first time was we rebuilt the Mayfair Community Center. And what we did there was we created an infrastructure so that we could have a childcare facility there. I think that when we think about building infrastructures within the neighborhood, we should look to our community centers so that families can walk out their front door and be able to take their children there. And then as they come home, they can pick their children up as well. The other thing that I want to make sure that we start looking at is the Moxa Youth Center. That building has been vacant for so long, and it was a vital resource within the community. Figuring out how we reactivate that facility because it offered a lot of services to the community. The other thing that I think is so important that I've heard as I've been walking the neighborhoods from individuals that do have in-home childcare services for their community is that the process is very difficult. So we need to work to make sure that we're streamlining that so that it's much easier for individuals to be able to go down this path, which is a noble path because we need it within District Five, to be able to provide that service right there in their own community. Those are some of the things that I will do. And when I was in the assembly, we worked to make sure that we were also creating more slots. And we also worked to make sure that funding was coming down to the local level. Thank you.
Thank you. The city is currently working with stakeholders to draft a strategic plan for the city's mayor's gang prevention task force. That includes priorities for the prevention and intervention services provided by nonprofit providers called the Best Contractors. In the context of the city budget, how would you prioritize or balance funding between, one, investments in prevention and intervention of violence and crime and providing opportunity, especially for youth? And on the other hand, investments in more downstream approaches like policing. And let's start with Jan. I think you're muted.
Thank you for the question. It is clearly very important that we bring everyone together to solve our problems. I think one of the problems that we have in politics is that us versus them mentality. I served as a fire captain. Living to a dangerous situation, we don't see ourselves as different. We come together as a team and we work together. And that's the spirit that I would like to bring to our city government. Clearly, it's important that we work with people who represent the whole communities. From nonprofit organization to builder, to businesses, to our county and our city as well. And why, that's not the only reason that I run for the office, for the city council. I want to make sure that it's fair and equitable for everyone within our community and businesses. Because we've been doing this political arena as usual. We need changes. For example, the Vietnamese-American community has been pushed out by political force in San Jose. And we need to make sure that every community is being heard. And by not being a politician.
All right. Thank you. Irene?
So that question is framed as a bit of a Hobson's choice, and I don't think it's an either-or question. If we lived in a perfect world, of course, we would only prioritize crime prevention and youth opportunity. However, our residents in D three are demanding more immediate results. So in city government, we must be more non-dogmatic and post-ideological. That means we need to focus on what really works for folks right now in this moment who live and work in D three. I would privilege the programs such as the Mayor's Gang Prevention Task Force and others that can show dramatic visible results, whether they're upstream or whether they're downstream. And I would push for prevention and opportunity through spending reform to reappropriate budget in accordance with many of the cost-saving measures that our city auditor has identified over the last several years. Thank you.
Thank you. Omar?
Yes, so this is definitely a balancing act as both are extremely important. But the data and research are very clear. Prevention saves lives. We know that. It safeguards our community. It saves money because prevention is more cost-effective than intervention. But because it is more challenging to measure in, dollars tend to be invested more in, oh.
Yeah, sorry.
Yeah. I don't know where I left off because I'm not looking at the clock.
That's all right. We could do a minute.
Okay, yeah, that's fine. So anyways, dollars tend to be invested in intervening with intervention. But we all know that intervention doesn't look like a clinical intervention, right? We need quality programming for our children that exposes them to opportunities, educational, social, you name it, academic. Those are important. This is, this is especially significant in communities of color where poverty and lack of resources can differ between life and death. I attended Washington Elementary School. I was a participant of Washington Youth Volunteer Group. I participated in many of the programs of the Biblioteca Latinoamericana. And that, those programs that the youth center and the library offered, saved my life. Saved my friend's life, saved our community. And so we know that investing in children, investing in youth, is crime prevention. And it leads to our community being healthier and more productive and deters them from a life of crime and continuing to live in poverty.
Thank you. Nora?
Thank you. I think one of the things that we have to remember, and I think it's kind of the theme, is that prevention really does save lives. And when I was on the city council, we were able to create, where the city invested in homework sites on schools so that children had a safe place to get assistance. We also need to make sure that we're using our youth centers as a place for youth to come on Friday nights, Saturday nights, and Sunday nights. So they're not out in the streets and they have a safe place. And being able to provide services where we would look to the nonprofits to help enhance what the city is doing with our youth programs in our community centers. Making sure that our libraries have storytelling. We can tap into some of our high school students that want to be able to service within their community and make sure that our librarians have the additional resources that they need to make sure that the libraries are thriving. I mean, the city of San Jose and the residents invested in building all these new libraries. Let's make sure that they're being used to their full capacity. And the Mayor's Gang Task Force, when I was on that, we did some phenomenal work. And I hope to be able to be able to be a part of that so that we can continue to thrive and bring in resources. I also was able to secure an additional two million in 2007, which addressed the intervention.
Thank you. And Maya?
Thank you. This is a great question because investments in prevention and intervention services are a large part of our public safety that is often overlooked. In short, I think we need both. We need to invest in prevention and intervention services and we need to invest in our police department. As a council member, I fought for more funding for best programs through the Mayor's Gang Prevention Task Force. And during the pandemic, when violence was increasing across the nation, my opponent was sitting in Tracy while I was working to improve our best programs that serve our youth. I was going and working with our nonprofit partners and I've seen firsthand the importance of these services in our neighborhoods such as Rock Springs, Santee, Ousley, Seven Trees, and Alma. But I also understand the need to invest in our police department, and I supported doing so in the last budget cycle. This is a big deal, especially in District Seven, which wholly encompasses District Lincoln, which is the city's busiest police district. And for the first time, the city is adding officers and approved adding more in the coming years, focusing on MCAT and in community policing. So we need to strike a balance between prevention and intervention and enforcement. But this balance can be increased and by also adding after-school programs and reopening Fair Swim Center and adding more team programming. We need to do all of those things.
Thank you. Our fifth question was pre-submitted by Francisco Venezuela at the San Andreas Regional Center. At the beginning of this year, the county declared mental health needs and substance abuse a public health crisis. Addressing the community's mental health and well-being needs will require all hands on deck. County, city, nonprofit providers, and impacted community members. How do you plan on addressing our community's need for mental health services? And we'll start with Irene.
Well, the county recently passed and is planning implementation of Laura's Law, which is the outpatient treatment. And Governor Newsom just signed CARECOURT for mandatory in-house treatment. Here, he signed it in San Jose. Unfortunately, in Santa Clara County, we are not part of the pilot program. And our implementation of CARECOURT is outside of two years. Again, we really can't waste any time responding to the needs of those who are crying out loud for our help. I'm the only candidate in this race with the education and experience in mental health treatment. And here's what that expertise tells me. Job number one is shelter stabilization at destination locations. Job number two is services, safety, showers, and security for those who currently live on the sidewalks, creep beds, and parks. And job number three is to verify and validate that everyone is getting the help that they need instead of the current status quo haphazard approach to drive-by treatment. Thank you.
Thank you. Omar?
So unfortunately, the city of San Jose is not currently equipped with social workers and trauma and other crisis intervention counselors that immediately work with provide mental health services. This is why we depend on strong partnerships with our county, but most importantly, with our nonprofits. They are the boots on the ground and know the services that our residents need immediately. And we know that we need greater collaboration with our county. That's happening, and we miss continuing to do that. Bill Wilson, YWCA, Nextdoor Solutions, Allen Rock Counseling Center, Momentum, Catholic Charities, Upland. These are unbelievably amazing nonprofits that work with our vulnerable populations, offering social services, trauma services, mental health services, drug addiction, and other types of important counseling. So we know that, we know that we cannot do this alone. So we need to work with our nonprofits to make sure that we identify those service gaps and that mental health is a priority for everyone. And I have the relationships and experience in those partnerships, making sure that we're going to follow through on these goals and having mental health services for all our residents in the city of San Jose.
Thank you. Nora?
Thank you. I think the first thing that we need to do as a city is to build a stronger partnership with the county so that we can be in sync with them. The other thing that I think is important is that we need to make sure that our best funding is continuing to fund the nonprofits that are doing the work in our community. I was on the Tobacco Fund when I was there, and now it has been moved, unfortunately, to the General Fund. If that has changed, please let me know. But we need to create a committee that actually works side by side with the county so that we are in sync with them when it comes to funding and where our needs are highest needs. The other thing that I think we need to do is we need to work with the county so that our school-linked services are coming to our community centers so that families have access to resources. I think that the one thing that we as a city do really well is that we're in the neighborhoods, we're in the community, and being able to have a system that is accessible and is streamlined for our residents to have access to information is very crucial. Thank you.
Thank you. Maya?
Thank you. I would first like to say that anything that we do needs to be collaboration. Our county, who owns the mental health system, and we must also collaborate with the nonprofits in our community that provide the services on the ground. As a council member, I secured funding in the budget so that nonprofits such as the Healthier Kids Foundation could provide services to children who desperately need mental health services after this pandemic. According to a study that the Healthier Kids Foundation did in the Franklin McKinley School District, sixty percent of third graders need an urgent mental health intervention. We are in a crisis and we need to respond appropriately. I'd also like to add that we launched the city's first-ever mobile crisis assessment team, or MCAT, which is a specialized unit of sworn officers that receive training for de-escalating mental health crisis episodes. They go out often with county mental health staff. And with the successful pilot started in 2020, the city secured federal funding to expand MCAT in the last budget cycle. And MCAT is incredibly important work because when a mental health episode does occur, we need, first responders need the training, the tools, and to be able to make the referrals in the county system to help. Thank you.
Thank you. And Jan?
Yes, I'd like to take about thirty seconds to respond to our city council sitting incumbent stating that I was sitting on my, but it's not, I served this community for the last twenty-two years. I was the frontline that deal with crime, people's needs, emergency. So definitely on the prevention and intervention, violence, crime in our city, I definitely support the police department. I don't think we should not, we should not defund the police. My opponent has made some statements that seem to support defunding, and I disagree with her on that topic. Now, let's get into illness. I work at the old Agnew's Now, let's get into illness. I work, I work at the old Agnew's facility. I'm the only candidate in District Seven that have that experience to work with the mentally ill and the mentally disabled as well. As a side tech, I understand the needs for family, for patients and people who have mental illness that seek the treatment. We need to bring back facility like that. We need to work with the county to create many, many facility to meet the needs. And we need to treat the mental illness with dignity, respect, and we bring in services and provide a clean, safe environment for them. Thank you.
Thank you. And thank you all for your answers. We're going to be shifting to our lightning round questions this time. Um, so it'll be a series of quick questions staggering both between fun and serious topics, each to be answered in a yes or no, or in a response of five words or less. We're gonna start with candidate Omar Torres and then we're gonna continue in the same order for the lightning round questions. Alright, um, so what was the last book you read?
The last uh, book I read? Well, that's a, that's not a good, that's not a good answer, obviously. You know, I like to read articles. I haven't, I, I'll be honest, I haven't, I haven't read a book in a while. Uh, but you know, I like to read, uh, you know, current events. I like to read what's happening in, in, around the world. Uh, and so, you know, I, I still read the newspaper and I still read Time Magazine and Newsweek, believe it or not, and all those uh, amazing uh, current event art uh, magazines.
Thank you. Nora?
You know, thank you for that question. Uh, my son is a, uh, loves to read. Uh, we read together How to Kill a Mockingbird, which was my second time to read it. Um, and um, I am excited that him and I were able to share that together.
Thanks. Uh, Maya?
Oh, that's a great book. Uh, now I wanna go back and read it. Um, I, I just checked, uh, what was the book? Cause you know, days are long right now. Uh, it was Summer in the Waiting Room by a, a friend, Eddie Garcia.
Thank you. Ben?
Uh, the last book I um, read was The Awakened Science um, by um, Tony Robbins. And then the second one was How to Be, uh, How Seven Hatted to be a Better Manager. That's it.
Thanks. Uh, and Irene?
The last book I read was High Conflict, which pivots onto mediation and negotiation strategies in, in very difficult negotiations, like when you're negotiating hostage situations. It's fascinating.
Yeah, thanks for sharing. Alright, and let's keep it to yes or no or five words or less. Um, this one is easy. To your coffee or something else. And, and we'll start with Omar.
Coffee.
Nora?
Tea.
Maya?
Definitely coffee.
Ben?
Two large glasses of clean water in the morning.
And Irene?
Green tea.
Nice. Alrighty. Our communities food need dramatically increased during the pandemic. And at the same time, we learned that there had been a pre-exist, pre-existing unmet food security issue in our community. Yes or no? Does the city have a role in meeting the ongoing food needs in our city in coordination with the county? Omar?
Absolutely.
Nora?
Yes.
Maya?
Absolutely.
Ben?
Absolutely unequivocally on that.
Irene?
Yes.
Thank you. Alright. What do you prefer? TikTok or Instagram? Omar?
Well, I'm me first all the time. Uh, Instagram. I have not downloaded TikTok yet, but I hear that it's supposed to be for people under twenty-five, so that's why.
Nora?
Instagram.
Maya?
Well, I'm old too, so I'm gonna say Instagram.
Ben?
TikTok.
Nice. Irene?
TikTok.
Nice. What is your favorite restaurant within your district? And I'm sorry, Omar.
You know, at another debate, I entered another coffee shop and I went to that coffee shop and they got angry. So all of them. Amazing restaurants in this, in District Three, all of them.
Nora?
I um, you know, I try to go to as many restaurants in, in District Five. I love food, so I will have to say, you know, everyone that has good food and that's uh, pretty much everyone here.
Maya?
Well, with La Placita and Little Saigon, there's a lot of good food in District Seven.
Ben?
Lots of Vietnamese food in Vietnam Town and I love the Taco Truck right off of McLaughlin and King.
Irene?
We'll have to agree with Omar on this one. It's everyone, but I do like Sabay Thai and I like El Maza uh, for their ceviche.
Thank you. Our city and county prevented a tsunami of evictions and homelessness over the past two and a half years by working with nonprofits and the private sector and together investing in and launching a cash assistance program that helps families and individuals pay rent. Yes or no? Should the city continue to invest in these successful eviction prevention strategies? Omar?
Yes.
Nora?
Yes.
Maya?
Absolutely.
Ben?
Yes.
And Irene?
Yes, rental voucher program.
If you could pick a superpower, what would it be? And I'm gonna switch up the order this time, actually. Irene?
You know, I'm really partial to Elastigirl, so I'd like to stretch.
Nice. Ben?
Put peace on this earth and unity.
Maya?
Do not need any sleep, ever.
Nora?
Um, I think to be able to move uh, fast so that I could um, work uh, twice as hard.
And Omar?
Ending homelessness and poverty.
The city council voted this year to add a charter amendment including equity measures, now called Measure I, for the voters to consider on the November ballot. Yes or no? Do you support Measure I? Irene?
Yes.
Ben?
Yes, absolutely.
Maya?
Yes.
Nora?
Yes.
And Omar?
Yes.
Um, what is your favorite hobby? Irene?
Running.
Ben?
Biking.
Maya?
Travel.
Um, Nora?
I have two, gardening and cooking.
And Omar?
Serving my community.
Alrighty, um, and that is it for our lightning round. Um, candidates, thank you for the opportunity to get to know you a little better. That was fun. Um, we have two more questions left for the forum and we'll kick it off right now. Nonprofits provide essential human services to communities that are hard to reach. Nonprofits and the city partnered intensely during the pandemic on food distribution, vaccines, eviction prevention, and outreach to those who are unhoused, as a few examples. How important is it to you that the city have a meaningful and healthy partnership with nonprofits as stakeholders, co-creators, contractors, and organizations who are proximate to the community? And let's start with Nora.
You know, thank you for this question. Um, I think it's extremely important. We wouldn't have been able to have the facility at the Mexican Heritage uh, Center Plaza if, if we hadn't been able to get nonprofits. Um, I uh, saw the need. I called uh, Gardener Health uh, Clinic uh, to partner with us. We were able to get the city to waive the fee. Um, so being a part of that movement and working with Senator Dave Cortezzi to secure the half a million dollars uh, was extremely important and we did that in a very quick manner. And I share that with you because that wouldn't have happened if we hadn't had the nonprofit world working with us to be able to move that. And, and you know that uh, um, the, the facility was staffed by the, the collective, uh, CC by the collective and they were actually able to move uh, the facility from a testing to a um, a vaccination site. And that was very crucial and it was one of the most visited uh, facilities in the city of San Jose. And it uh, showed that uh, partnerships do matter. Thank you.
Thank you. Maya?
Prior to being a council member, I came from the nonprofit sector and uh, I understand and believe in the incredible work uh, they do in our communities. Um, and so while my opponent was living in San Joaquin County for twen- over twenty-five years, I was working on various initiatives in our community, from the All the Way Home Campaign and Veteran Homelessness to being the founding board president of Latinas Postre Council. The deep relationships I've built with our nonprofit community has allowed me to bring more resources to District Seven and to better serve our residents. This includes opening three resource centers in District Seven in partnership with First Five and Catholic Charities, uh, bringing a new park to the Tropical Alani Community in partnership with Luna and distributing hundreds of thousands of meals in District Seven. Uh, during the pandemic, I actually partnered with a local nonprofit before COVID to do food distributions at the Vietnamese American Cultural Center. Very quickly after the pandemic hit, we outgrew that and had to move it to YB. Um, we were the last county uh, in the state to offer our county rental assistance programs because of the tremendous equity partners that we had in Santa Clara County. These partnerships were critical to our success and we need to continue to support and to build capacity for our local nonprofits so that we can continue to better serve our communities together.
Ben?
Uh, yes, thank you very much. Uh, great question. I wanna make sure that our audience understand that I served the community for the last twenty-two years and I continue to serve the community as a firefighter, as a fire captain. And as a firefighter, when we come to emergency, we come together as a team. And I think it's essential that we, including nonprofit organizations and many other entity to come together to come up with a better solution than what we have now. As you see in District Seven, it's full of garbage, full of homelessness, full of crime. And I believe we deserve so much better and we can do so much better. And I ask that we, as a community, comes together as one and make it better. We no longer politic as usual. You know, and, and when we talk about the Vietnamese community have been pushed out by the political power and by political force in San Jose. And, and when people talk about uh, DVSC and homeless, I've done that probably way before she was you know, even a teenagers. And um, and I know that I care about our community. I serve our que- and we need to work together as one. Thank you.
Thank you. Irene?
Of course, the city nonprofit partnership is fundamental and especially in D three. But we don't manage it that way. Um, if you're a big nonprofit with a favored relationship at the housing department, the current system is probably okay. But if you're a small nonprofit or a new one, not so much. And we're missing out on some really great approaches. I believe we should model our nonprofit relationship along the lines of San Francisco's innovative nonprofit management system. They centralized the city's relationship with nonprofits in terms of streamlining their compliance requirements and offering training opportunities. Generally, this could mean more funding for nonprofits and fewer hassles dealing with the city. My broader plan for reimagining the city's relationship with what I call CCC, which is Community Coordination Committee, can be found on my Medium account and that goes into much more detail.
Thank you. And Omar?
So it's very important. The magnitude uh, of the work that we all are involved in cannot be done effectively in silos or without each other. Uh, and no municipality uh, can feasibly conceive of doing this work without solid partnerships uh, with our nonprofits, bo- both large and small. Uh, what is crystal clear is that we have to walk hand in hand uh, to tackle the many issues facing our city, housing, education, our unhoused living in, in creeks and living on our, uh, on our streets, addressing the issues of violence, uh, sexual assault. Those are important. And so I wanna take this moment to say thank you to the many nonprofits that helped me and my community get to where we are now. I, I went to Martha's Kitchen when my family couldn't afford a meal. My grandpa would take us. That's why I like lentil soup. I went to Sacred Heart Community Services for their, for their program and their food bank. I was, I got counseling services at Catholic Charities at the Washington United Youth Center. And so I wouldn't be here today if it wasn't for our nonprofits. And as council member, I'm gonna make, make sure and continue to work with our nonprofits to help our community succeed.
Thank you. San Jose's housing shortage is one of the worst of any major US city, according to a recent study from Angie. Ultimately, we know that solving a housing crisis of this magnitude will require us to dedicate additional financial resources to the problem. What ideas do you have for generating more public funding to pay for solutions to the housing shortage and homelessness? And we'll start with Maya.
Heard my saying in twenty sixteen, my opponent was still living in Creasy and in fact didn't vote that year. I volunteered with Measure A, uh, which has been a game changer for our county and passed with sixty-seven percent of the vote that year in Santa Clara County. Uh, Measure A funds are expected to be extended in two thousand and twenty-three. Uh, and so thank you for asking this question. Cause I think most people aren't aware of that. Built, we have so much in the pipeline. The city's commercial linkage fee is expected to start kicking in and we can use that money towards solutions. Measure E has also generated more revenue than expected. And in fact, we were the first city in the state to set money aside of our own affordable housing funding to put towards homeless prevention and specifically percentages for ELI, uh, very low and moderate housing. Uh, the bottom line is we need more funding from state and federal government. The governor is putting more funding into housing and we need to add to that. Also, the original Build Back Better Plan had more funding for housing, including more funding for vouchers, which after midterms, we should continue to lobby for that effort. And we need more of those state and federal resources uh, from this to come to local government. Thank you.
Thank you. Ben?
Well, thank you for the question. First of all, doing better with the money that we have means we are doing more. So I would start there. I know that too many people are struggling to buy grocery, to put gas in the tank, um, to have childcare. So we owe it to them to start with a better before we focus on taking on more of their money. If we want to get more tax revenue, we open more businesses, particularly supporting small businesses. When we see empty storefronts, this is where family could be both making a living, contribution to our tax revenue. So we start there. We need to continue to approve not only eleven plans for affordable housing. We need to expedite those. We need to reduce the fees. We need to centralize services so we can get these housing to move in a ex- much faster pace than what we are now. We all know that we in a housing crisis and if we continue the way we do things, we will not meet our goals. And so I ask that people think out of the box, vote for someone who can make changes. Thank you.
Thank you. Irene?
Uh, money. Um, give me a billion dollars over a three-year period and I can guarantee you a better result than an eleven percent increase in homelessness. I'm not trying to be difficult, but implicit in this question is an assumption that more money always means a better result. And it doesn't, especially if we're not spending the money in a smart way. This is one of those lessons that business teaches you in a really ruthless manner. We need to spend the money in a way that delivers the results we want in a cost, cost-effective manner. A negative example of this is our housing department whose budget skyrocketed from two hundred and ninety-eight million to four hundred and thirty-five million. That extra money would have been better spent had it been repurposed to my rental voucher program to keep families housed and prevent- That extra money would have been better spent had it been repurposed to my rental voucher program to keep families housed and prevent homelessness. So I'm saying we need a complete audit of how we are spending our housing dollars before we commit to upping the budget. I'm open to it. But I can tell you that I want to see a spending plan that focuses much more on treatment now, shelter now, placement now, prevention now, instead of million-dollar units being built a decade in the future.
Thank you. Omar?
So we, we, we are fully aware of the severity of this housing crisis, and it is all hands on deck. Too many of our residents live in inhumane conditions, and many more are on the brink of homelessness, and that's, that's the, the scary part, on the brink of homelessness. The, the only solution is to build more affordable housing, and we know that. And one of the ways we can do this is by increasing our city's commercial linkage fee. We have one of the lowest commercial linkage fees in the county, in the county. Sunnyvale has a super high one, by the way, where all of our high-tech companies are investing. We cannot continue to blame our nonprofits and our county on this, on this crisis. We have to be proactive in addressing this issue. And so we need to make sure that we are utilizing Measure E monies to address homelessness prevention, preserve more housing for our most vulnerable. So what District Three needs is a representative who will create solutions with our county, our city, our housing department, most importantly, our nonprofits, to deal with this housing crisis. We can't do it alone. And I'm the only candidate in that race who's gonna be able to.
Thank you. And Nora?
Thank you. This is actually an issue that has been at the forefront of us for the city of San Jose for, for years. And I think that when I was on the city council, when we offer, put out to, to build 10,000 affordable housing units, I was able to build 3,000 in, in my district alone. But I think we need to do more. I think we need to reissue the Measure A bond and, and look at if we need to change it a little bit. I also think that we need to think outside of the box and maybe look at our surplus property and think about maybe using that and working with our nonprofit allies in the space of housing. I also think that it's important for us, if we're gonna be able to create a sustainable community where families can actually get out of poverty, and they have the ability to purchase a home, we need to think about that and what that looks like. It's not the traditional way. I'm gonna share a story with you before I leave. My time's running out. I was walking yesterday, went to a house and met a young couple, and they bought their first home. And they got a down payment from a nonprofit that actually supports that. That's what we need to do, and they actually teach right here in Alum Rock, excuse me, in East Side School District. And so I think that's what we need to invest in people and them owning their homes. Thank you.
Thank you. That was our last question. Now our candidates will each have a minute to say their closing remarks, and we'll start with you.
Well, thank you very much. There, there's a clear difference in this race. My opponents have been in the office the last four years, only served the community for the last four years. And if you think things have gotten better, then let me be bold to say that she'd probably be your choice. But you think that we can do better, then I humbly ask for your vote. I served the community for the last 22 years and still serve our community, and I've seen the problem for I'm not a politician. I'm a first responder, and what we need right now is someone who can take action and respond. And not succumb to the political powerful out there, someone who's not afraid to tell the truth, someone who doesn't worry about getting their hands dirty. And we have to lower the crime, get the homeless off the street, and as your servant, as a city council, I still be your servant. Thank you.
Thank you. Maya?
Thank you. The city of San Jose is facing incredible challenges, and District Seven needs a representative that is from the community, that's been in this, in this community, that understands its issues, and that will put in the work to improve the lives of everyone. I rose to the challenge to ensure that the residents of District Seven not only receive their fair share of, from our local government, but have increased resources, increased investments into our neighborhoods, and made systemic changes to our government to overcome decades of neglect and underrepresentation that led to the many issues we face today. In challenging times, we need council members that are willing to stand up for our residents, businesses, and do what's right for our city. I'm endorsed by the San Jose Firefighters, Santa Clara County Democratic Party, and Congresswoman, Congresswoman Zola Affrin. To see what I've done in District Seven, visit mayasparsa.com/neighborhoods. Thank you.
Thank you. Nora?
I'm excited about the opportunity to serve my district, District Five, East San Jose. And I share that with you because whether I am an elected or a community activist or just a mom living in this district, I work side by side with the neighborhood leaders, and I'm honored to have their endorsements and their support. I'm also excited about the opportunity to continue the work that we started many years ago. I will never forget when one particular woman came up to me and she said, you know, Nora, we need you to run. And I listened to her, and she said, we need experience, someone that can get things done, and you can do that. And so I'm running to make sure that we move District Five and move it forward. And I'm honored to have the endorsement of Senator Dave Cortezzi, and as I said, a lot of neighborhood associations. Thank you.
Thank you. Omar?
So for two decades, I have brought residents of all ages to the table. We have complex issues here in the city of San Jose, but one council member, one government agency cannot do it alone. Building partnerships, creating solutions, and tying services together is, is important work to me and my community and folks who I'm gonna represent on the city council. My track record speaks for itself. I will hit the ground running, and I will not need training wheels to be council member for District Three. And I am, I'm pleased to announce that this morning, I got a phone call from former mayor Tom McHenry, and he's endorsing our campaign. And so that's important because myself and Tom McHenry come from different political spectrums.
Thank you. And Irene?
Thank you. I am running because our neighborhood in D Three is in crisis. Crime, homelessness, blight, boarded up downtown. And speaking frankly, this decay in D Three is happening because of our current city policies and the system at City Hall, they're just not cutting it. They're slow, expensive, ineffective, and unaccountable. And when we see these patterns, we have to ask ourselves who's benefiting? Big benefits, big government benefits, big business benefits, big nonprofits benefit, and big special interests benefit. And who's losing? It's the little guy that's losing. It's me, our neighbors, our neighborhoods. It's the small nonprofit. It's the guy who's on the sidewalk being asked to wait another five years until housing is built. We need a radical new voice in D Three with experience that D Three actually needs. I have experience with mental ill, providing housing, and balancing big budgets. And I am the one with these critical skills to help D Three through this crisis.
Thank you. Thank you all so much, candidates, for your participation. It's always fun to see you guys here. I'll pass it back to Claire for her closing statements.
Thank you, candidates, for being here today and sharing your goals for the San Jose City Council. Audience members, please show your appreciation with Zoom reactions and messages through the chat. As a nonprofit association, we want to be accessible to you all as best as possible. Please reference the information listed here on this slide to best inform you all on how to contact our team. Your feedback and suggestions really help us improve the ways we serve this sector. Thank you for joining us today. Hope to see you at our future events.